Okay, let's please call meeting in order. Before we call the roll, I have to note that Commissioner Rittenhouse will be recusing himself this evening because the first item on the agenda is his house. So he will not be participating in the hearing. Celeste, call roll.
Evans?
Here.
Metiskeal? Holloman?
Here.
Mead?
Here.
Rittenhouse?
Obviously no.
Well, he's still here.
No, he's not here.
Not at all?
He is not here.
All right.
As a commissioner. As a petitioner, yes.
Slifka?
Here.
Stacking?
Here.
Eric Form.
Thank you. Okay, so next item is approval of the agenda for this evening.
Move to approve.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and then we have the approval of the minutes of the October 8, 2020 meeting, the last meeting.
Still move?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we have two items on the agenda this evening. And our first item is a variation request. Request is for a variation from Section 11-3-5C, fences and walls to increase the allowable fence height in the street yard from 42 inches to 48 inches, and a variation from Section 11-4A-6, DSF, SFMR, single-family medium-density residential districts setback requirements, and to increase the allowable lot coverage from 30 to 40 percent. The location is 502 South Fourth Street. The applicant is John and Jennifer Rittenhouse. Is there anyone in the public here to hear this item, to speak on this item? Okay, so I'll dispense with reading the procedure for the public hearing, but basically we just hear from the applicant, we question, then any public comment, applicant has a chance to talk about that, and then we can finalize it, possibly close the hearing if we have enough information. If not, we continue. So that's the general procedure we'll file this evening as we always do. Okay, do you have things on the record we can read in?
Thank you, Chair Stocking. The contents of this file include an application for variations filed by John and Jennifer Rittenhouse dated September 2, 2020, including a letter of intent, a before-and-after photos of the subject property, a response to variation standards, which all those items are included in your packet this evening, a platter survey of the subject property dated August 4, 2020, included in the packet, site improvement plans revised September 25, 2020, also included in the packet, a letter from Patricia Cameron received today, October 22, 2020, which is provided at each commissioner's desk, a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated October 19, 2020, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on October 7, 2020 for tonight's public hearing, and finally, a copy of the notice mailed, excuse me, a copy of the notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just Commissioner Evans, that letter from Patricia Cameron was emailed to you just recently, so you have that in your email?
I saw something about a parking agreement. I did not see a letter. Let me check.
It was probably within the last 15, 20 minutes.
Came in real late this afternoon, so...
I got it. Okay, I got it right now. I see it.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening. John Rittenhouse, 502 South Fourth Street. I'm here tonight with my wife Jennifer. Thank you for your time and your volunteerism tonight. The packet that Chayton sent out, I think, pretty much sums it up in terms of what my wife and I submitted back in September. How this kind of started was I knew I had a fence issue on my property. I called Eric out from the street. He was kind enough to come out. We're talking about the fence, and he explained the issue with the fence, and I knew I would have to get a variance, and he said, "You know, you have a lot variance issue too." And I said, "Well, I don't think I do." And I checked the, and I talked to David about this after the fact, but I checked, and it was a misprint, but my property was 40 percent. And Eric at the time said, "You're at 30 percent." And I was like, "Oh, wow." I didn't realize that. So the next day, I emailed David, and David said, "Yeah, it was a typo." So it became a 40 percent, or I'm sorry, a 30 percent issue. So then it became two variances that my wife and I were requesting. So as the packet suggests, I talked to David. David was kind enough to give me some of his feedback. I think in terms of, I think the main points that I'd like to express is, number one, I've shared in the packet that my wife and I purchased this historic home back in 2004. I gave you guys a little bit of history just because I thought it was unique. We considered this property caretakers for however long we decided to live there, and then hopefully the next family will take over and do the same. We spent countless hours, blood, sweat, tears, and a heck of a lot of money on restoring this property. We've always been very cognizant of the historic nature of the home and tried to, for architecture purposes and everything, try to keep it within the same line. So like everybody, when COVID hit, my oldest came back from college, and we're all living together, and we started talking about how cool it would have been if we had a pool to, you know, hang out in all summer. And that's when my wife and I started talking about this as an extension of our property. So when I talked to David, you know, David kind of shared with me that the spirit of the rule back in 2006, when the city council voted on the infill, was a situation where a lot of communities around us, Glenell and Wheaton, were seeing this, where folks were coming in, buying these properties, and tearing them down, and building these McMansions on the properties. And that was kind of the spirit of the rule, and that's kind of how our property was affected by this regulation or this 30 percent limit. So again, I feel that my wife and I have done due diligence in terms of trying to explain to you folks our intentions. I think the security fence, to me, is actually a benefit to any future property owner by moving that up off the property. As I shared in the packet, you know, being the closest house to the train is a blessing but also a curse. And, you know, there's a lot of bars and restaurants, and we literally have been woken up a few times by folks entering our property. And so for security purposes, I actually think moving that up would be a good thing. And I think that's it.
Do you have anything to say?
No. Okay, so I'm open to questions.
Okay. Any questions?
I've got a couple. Does the approval for the fence, and I guess this is a question both for the applicant and for David and Chayton, does this approval apply to the fence as laid out? Because you could fence an entire yard, and I don't know that a 48-inch fence at the hard corner for traffic visibility would make sense. Does this variation and approval apply just as it's laid out here where it comes up to the back corner of the home?
Right, it would apply to the plans as presented.
The plans as submitted, so that, you know, if there was a desire to fence the entire front yard or something, that would be...
Yeah, I know.
Okay, that was just more clarification than anything. And the same goes for the 40 percent. If that's approved for this design, a subsequent owner could not come in and, could they come in and raise the pool and poolhouse and add a wing onto their home that created, I think there was a comment made about it, and we're not adding a wing onto the home, but this, that again, applies only to this as submitted and designed, the 40 percent. So if a subsequent owner came in, would they have 40 percent? And if they got rid of the pool, could they build onto the home? Or is it just for this, we're approving just this design?
I believe if they raised all of that, they would still have the 40 percent lot coverage to work within for any improvements. But for an addition to the home, an expansion, you also have other regulations that would come into play, like floor area restrictions based on your lot size.
Do we know where that sits now with respect to floor area capacity or capability?
We don't, because there was not an addition proposed. We didn't walk through that worksheet. So I guess to answer the question, the lot coverage would run regardless of...
Run with the land after that. So the fence runs as designed, the lot coverage is for anything, just in perpetuity for the lot?
Right.
Oh, do we know the small lots on the Merritt King property, what lot coverage do they, because those are pretty tight?
Yeah, those are at 40 percent.
Those are 40?
And I think some may be up to 45 percent if they qualified for one of the bonuses.
Okay.
You get a 5 percent bonus if you have a detached garage in the rear yard or a side low garage.
Okay, right, right. Okay, no further questions.
Michael, you have anything?
Just one more maybe clarification on the fence. So the way the fence is shown, that would be permitted if it was a 42 inches?
Correct.
So the only difference is it's six inches taller in that location?
Right.
Thanks.
Rebecca?
So it was my understanding that you have to have 48-inch fence around the pool because of that, the international swimming pool and spa code, but in this case, we're talking about putting it on the all-around, basically. Is that, it's not just around the pool?
Well, so on the south side, we have a six-foot fence that separates us from the Geneva parking lot, and then we have a decorative fence that's 42 inches. On the east side, what we would do is move the 48-inch fence to sit right behind the decorative fence. It would connect to the six-foot fence on the south side, and then it would connect to the house on the north side.
On the north side?
Yeah, it would only be, it would only be on the east side in front of that lot where the pool is going.
Okay.
It would not go in front of the house.
Okay. And then I have another, are you going to read the letter? I just had a question in reference to...
Just go ahead and ask the question directly. The applicant's not here, but you can ask a question based on that.
Okay. I just was wondering if you looked at making it smaller. This letter implied, was asking that question of...
I didn't see the letter, so, sorry, I don't know what it implies.
We can read it. It's brief. So your letter's again from Patricia Cameron.
Is that a neighbor? There's no address or anything or capacity?
There's not. I do know that she lives in the neighborhood, but I don't remember her exact address. She says, "I'm not able to attend tonight's meeting where the variance request to increase the allowable lot coverage from 30 to 40 percent at 502 South Fourth Street will be discussed. I do not feel that this should be allowed. They should be able to reduce the footprint of the pool, poolhouse, patio, and changing areas in order to be in compliance with the current zoning laws. A variance sets a bad precedent in an already dense area. We just went through a review of all of this, and I do not support this request. Regarding the fence height, it is not clear to me whether or not this is along the property line or setback into the lot. In addition, I'm assuming John Rittenhouse must recuse himself from all discussions of this as a planning and zoning commissioner."
So Mike, I was just wondering if you looked at doing a plan that did stay within that 30 percent?
So, great question. You couldn't do it. You could not do it. By code, I have to have a certain amount of decking around the pool for safety purposes. And could we do without the poolhouse? Yes, we could. That was more of an extension with regards to trying to, honestly, to keep people out of our house in terms of, you know, wet bathing suits and had to go to the bathroom and things like that. Plus, up here in the winter, it's better to have a lot of utilities encased in a shelter versus exposed and things like that. So I'm not sure, I think that, to her point, I think the fence was self-explanatory. I did recuse myself. And then I think that, I think my point in the, in my petition was that I understand the spirit of the rule, but personally, I have a hard time with someone that buys a property. And I understand that you should have a certain percentage, but I really have a hard time seeing a property owner that has 19,999 square feet get 40 percent, and I have 6,000 more square feet, and I only get 30 percent. And I understand the spirit of the rule, but I think this is why we have a committee like this, because you look at it case by case. And like I said, I, this is not a 3,000, 4,000-square-foot wing off the side of my house. I don't think that would be an extension of our property. I think this is an accessory structure that is an extension of our property.
I just did some quick math. In order to be compliant with 30 percent, instead of adding 3,273 square feet, they'd only be able to allow it to add 821 square feet between a pool and/or decking and poolhouse. That would be a pretty, as you said, it would be really tough to do that and achieve any kind of acceptable use.
Do you have anything else, Rebecca?
No.
Ma'am, do you have anything for us?
My only concern is a follow-up on the question that John raised about whether or not a future owner could come in and use this 40 percent allowance to actually build a wing onto the house. David, you mentioned that other things like the floor area ratio would have to be factored in. Could you elaborate on that a little bit? And how difficult would it be for someone to take advantage of this and actually build an extension of the house?
I think, first, you know, that's my initial reaction, is I don't think you can condition it to these specific improvements. I will double-check that with our legal counsel and make sure if that is a condition that the commission would like to see moved forward. If it can be conditioned upon the site plan, we can present it to the council in that fashion. But in terms of the other regulations, how those apply, the floor area and the tear-down infill regulations is controlled based on the lot size. So, but the increase in the allowable floor area gets smaller the larger the lot gets for the same reasons that we're trying to kind of deter the tear downs and infills with much larger homes in our historic neighborhoods and our older neighborhoods in the community. So we would need to look at the existing floor area for the property and see where that's at in relation to what's allowed to be able to determine how much additional space could be added on to.
It sounds like your suggestion of having the approval be based on this particular project would solve that problem.
Right.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay. I don't really have any other questions either, other than, John, do you have any kind of example what the fence would look like in the front?
Yeah, Scott, that's a good question. I don't want to see it. So I was thinking probably some type of aluminum type of structure. I, we do have to have a certain code where it can't be, you know...
But can't get through it, yeah.
Can't get through it, but what sits behind, if you guys took a look, what sits behind the X decorative fence are boxwood hedges. We intend to keep those, and then probably try to plant something that will go a little bit higher than the boxwood in front of the fence. And then as it kind of angles over towards the house, it would, it would stay, I actually think it would stay more conducive to the nature of the property where it would meet all the codes, but maybe be more like a nice gate that has a security lock on it and things like that, but maybe more made out of wood to go with the stark nature of the home.
You did angle it, which is great, you know, right in the front, because again, the front presence of the house is amazing.
Yeah, thank you.
So...
I have a question.
Yes.
Does the historic district also get to say what material your fence is?
You know, I got it. That's a good question. I don't, I don't know.
It's typically an administrative review for a fence. It's not an alteration to the historic structure.
Yeah.
But obviously the addition, like if there was an addition in the future, that'd have to go through an architectural committee, so... But yeah, I mean, that's, I think it does run with the, with the property in terms of the granting, and whether we can condition it or not, I don't, that I can't answer.
That would be worth exploring, in my view. If it went forward like the fence and was approved as submitted, is that something that's workable for you? Obviously, a poolhouse and a pool.
I'm sorry, I missed the question, John.
What we're trying to get at is some future owner comes in and decides, "Let's get rid of this pool, and let's build a three-story wing towards the train station or something."
Correct.
If it was, if the variance to 40 percent was approved just for this design you've submitted, is that something that works?
Oh, for sure. Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I would propose that we try to explore that with legal and city council.
What would be that?
Whether we have the ability to condition it solely in the site plan presented. Yeah. I don't have any problem with the fence. I think there is a hardship here. He is next to the train station. He does, he is putting in a pool. He needs to secure it. I mean, I think there's shown hardship for that, for sure, but the, yeah, the percentage coverage and conditioning it to the lot might be problematic, so...
And recognizing if we vote, and it's not, we're not able to condition it, we're voting on the 40 percent in perpetuity to run with the land, so...
Yeah, that's right. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody here for the public to speak on, I already asked once, but I'll ask again? Anyone else here to speak on this item?
Pretty straightforward. Do we need to put that in the motion, that we're going to attempt to...
As we were discussing here, I was trying to do a little bit of background research, and conditions may be placed on a variation as long as it relates back to the standards. So if you feel the standards are met with that condition, that it is for the accessory improvements, maybe not tying it specifically to this pool and poolhouse, but for the accessory structures, in case they are modified in the future, but not to a building addition, that would be appropriate.
So saying that the variance relates to accessory structures, in this case, a pool and poolhouse.
Right.
So that it could be interpreted for a subsequent owner that, well, you're not adding on to the house, you need, this is only approved for accessory structures.
Right.
They have to come at that point for their own variance, if they were adding on to the house.
Right.
I don't think that's doable. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
Move to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Celeste?
Evans?
Aye.
Holloman?
Aye.
Mead?
Aye.
Slifka?
Aye.
Stacking?
Aye.
Can that passes?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval of a variation to increase the allowable fence height in the street yard of 502 South Fourth Street from 42 inches to 48 inches as submitted on the proposed site plan and subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Seconded.
Can we add the condition at this point?
This is just for the fence. There's two variations.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We're doing the fence first, and then we'll do the second. Moved and seconded, I believe? Michael, seconded. Celeste?
Evans?
Aye.
Holloman?
Aye.
Mead?
Aye.
Slifka?
Aye.
Stacking?
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a variation at 502 South Fourth Street to increase the allowable lot coverage from 30 to 40 percent, conditioned on the site plan submitted if permitted by the city council and legal review, and subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Celeste?
This is for percentage. Evans?
Aye.
Holloman?
Aye.
Mead?
Aye.
Slifka?
Aye.
Stacking?
Aye.
All right, very good. David, what's the next step on this?
This will move forward to the city council. The date is November 2nd. Is it November 7th? I'm sorry, my mic is off. Move forward to the city council on November 2nd, maybe at 7 o'clock in this room.
All right. Thanks, guys. All right, thank you very much. Okay, our second item on the agenda is a special use. It's a request for an amendment to the existing special use ordinance 2013-22 to allow for an addition of a permanent outdoor seating area. The location is 509 Stevens Street, and the applicant is Brad Novak of Penrose Brewing Company, LLC. Has there been anything agreed in the record?
Yes, sir. The contents of this file include an application for a special use filed by Brad Novak of Penrose Brewery dated July 29, 2020, a project description and response to special use standards included in the packet, site improvement plans revised September 10, 2020, also included in the packet, off-street parking agreement revised October 21, provided at each commissioner's desk this evening, a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated October 19, 2020, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal description that was published on October 7, 2020 for tonight's public hearing, and finally, a copy of the notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet.
All right, thank you very much. We'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening. I am Brad Novak from Penrose. This is my partner, Tom Quarter. We're at 509 Stevens Street. Really, we're just looking to add some permanent seating on the east side of our space. Really don't have a whole lot more to add than I've included in the packet. Clearly, in today's environment, outdoor space for people in our business is key, and really all Tom and I are trying to do is get in front of this really for next year. Obviously, this season seems to be somewhat dead for us, maybe a few more days, but this is really setting us up for next year and then for the future on there. So everything else is really laid out here nicely by Chayton in this document, probably about a capacity of 40 people. I don't see that 40 people being added in. It's just going to give our customers another space to sit, whether inside or outside, and that's really what we're looking for.
Okay. Any questions?
BEI Properties, I'm assuming that's a landlord, is that your landlord?
That is, yes, sir.
And they own the other properties as well, 435?
They own a large percentage, I think, of that industrial park there.
So the letter we got tonight, the BEI, is that the agreement, does this constitute the agreement to have unfettered use of...
That is part of the parking agreement, and then there's a document, I believe, separate that allows us and gives his permission to put in the outdoor space.
And that is, that agreement's all signed?
Yes, sir. Everything has been documented and signed both by landlords, and then obviously, we're here tonight to get your approval.
And you're going, your increase in parking that's dedicated or available to use coming from 29 to 31 spaces?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It says, and I looked at it, it says the 16 spaces in front.
Yes, sir.
And it's got these five that are up at the northeast corner, and then it says, I think it's 10 in the, or 10 spaces over here. Are they designated a certain 10 or just any 10?
I think any 10, and I think there's available 65 spaces, is what that document reads, actually. So I think we have plenty of parking. Again, I don't think this is going to increase capacity.
Right.
It's going to give options for our patrons.
Yeah, I was just curious more how it worked, because these tend to be visually or optically tied to Penrose. These are a little more suspect, because I'm not sure what goes on in these other properties, but...
Not a whole lot in that one.
Doesn't appear to be too high.
In front there, sir, no.
I drove it today, and it doesn't appear to be too high to use.
Right, yes.
The design will be similar to what you have out there today. You've got the barrels and the strong lights.
Yes, sir. Exactly. That is, that's what we're going with. That's going to be our look.
Okay.
We think it fits with what kind of the vibe that Penrose has.
All right, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, do you have anything?
No, so just, this is similar to what you had, you've had this summer.
Yes, sir. It's exactly what we have.
Going forward. I know I've been by several times, and it always looks like it's operating well.
Yes. Thank you.
Rebecca?
I just had a question about the, you guys have an entryway...
No, so just, this is similar to what you had, you've had this summer.
Yes, sir, it's exactly what we have.
I know I've been by several times, and it always looks like it's operating well.
Yes. Thank you.
Becca?
I just had a question about, the, you guys have a, an entryway, like, your main entryway, like, off of Stevens, and then there's that smaller drive, you know what I'm talking about?
Yep.
It says, do not exit, but enter.
Yep.
So I was confused about where that was on here, I mean.
That's about two buildings down. So Penrose sits at five oh nine, there is a, a fairly large building right next to us that takes up a, a fairly good chunk of that parking lot, and then the space you're referring to is the next building down from there.
Yeah. So is there, I guess this is just for my own information, has there ever been an effort to change that entryway, I guess?
I actually believe that Batavia Enterprises may have put new signs up there with a, I, I recognized them recently with a no-exit.
Yeah.
So I do, I do remember that it was slightly different before, but they, I do remember some new signs being up relatively recent that I noticed.
Yeah, I saw the signs, I just wondered if, if there had ever been a conversation
about opening that area, like, why is it only an entryway, to make it more conven- I used to have a shop right there.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So I know exactly where, where it is, but just to make that area, that whole parking lot more convenient for people to get
Sure.
in and out of, but I don't know if that's something that's ever been.
I think that'd be on Batavia Enterprises.
Oh, okay.
It's not something that's ever come up, but.
I thought it was a, I thought it was a Geneva City thing, but I just wondered why it's that way.
I, I believe the width is also fifteen feet, so that could, smaller one.
Yeah, I mean, just opening it, like, opening it up to the thirty feet or whatever the other openings are, that would make that whole parking lot, because then there's not a really great way to exit unless you go all the way down in front of
Havelcheck.
the Havelcheck building, so, you know, as a person who had a business right there, it, it's some hours of the evening, it does create a certain amount of traffic and people parking in your spots and things like that, but.
And there's not a restriction that I'm aware of from the city's perspective, I think it's just an old access point.
Yeah.
Because it's narrow, they've, they've signed it as exit only, or entrance only, sorry.
Okay, anything else for Becca?
No.
Okay. Mim, do you have anything?
I do not.
Just, my mic for the record, have you, say your, state your name.
My name's Tom Quarter, one of the co-founders of Penrose.
Did you spell it right?
K O R D E R.
I do have one question.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Sure.
With the additional seating, is there a plan right now to look at, like, a food, more than a truck, more than the food trucks?
At that location?
Mm-hmm.
No.
Okay.
No, we ju- we don't have the space, number one, to add it, and, and that food truck option seems to work well for us there, so we're gonna stick with that model.
Okay.
The only question I had is, obviously, you've got ways to get in and out of the building, you're not using that, that dock area that's on that side of the building or the, the large
Correct.
sliding door for deliveries or anything like that, so you don't, that's all worked out, you've got other places to go to get there.
Yeah, we've got lots of bay doors all the way down, so we can, there are twelve-foot bay doors at the end of the building.
Yeah, it looked like you did, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything else. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much, appreciate it.
And obviously, there's no public, so. Well, apparently, so.
I don't have any more discussion myself.
I don't have any, any big, any additional discussion required.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. Moved and seconded, Celeste?
Evans?
Aye.
Holloman?
Aye.
Mead?
Aye.
Slifka?
Aye.
Stacking?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend an existing special use ordinance twenty thirteen dash twenty-two for five oh nine Stevens Street to allow for the addition of a permanent outdoor seating area, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Second. Moved and seconded, Celeste?
Okay, Evans?
Aye.
Holloman?
Aye.
Mead?
Aye.
Slifka?
Aye.
Stacking?
Aye.
Passes.
All right, thank you.
And so, that would also go forward to the city council on November second? That goes to the city council on November second for, for their consideration? If you'd like to be, there's no presentation required, but if you want to be available for questions, and then I just wanted to say congratulations on the gold medal, too, for Goofy Boots.
That's the man responsible right there? Thank you, see ya.
Yeah, it's a, like a hazy IPA, just wanted the, the gold medal.
Wow, there you go. All right.
Got it.
So, any other items, the discussion, I think?
Yeah.
Some things are obviously moving, some big, big things.
Yes, so this evening, just wanted to provide you an update on some of the projects, and then also touch on how the planning and zoning commission will deal with the new COVID restrictions moving forward, so we're gonna touch on those few things real quick. But an update on projects, let's begin with that first. So the Traxler subdivision was approved this past Monday, October nineteenth, at the city council meeting, it was approved with some modifications, those modifications being the relocation of two existing trees, I believe, or just two trees that were proposed, and then the addition of one tree, but that, that did, was approved by the city council. And then also, we have Emma's Landing going through its second review by city staff right now, those comments will be due by November fifth, tentatively, it's scheduled to come before the planning and zoning commission on Thursday, November twelfth, but that just depends on the feedback that we get and if they're ready to move forward. And then, lastly, we have the Verizon Wireless Cellphone Tower, the communications tower. The second round of comments were sent out to them, but we have not heard back from them, so we're just waiting on that, and we'll be reaching out to them in the near future if we do not hear from them relatively soon.
Where is that located again, is it down Randall somewhere?
Believe so.
Yeah, it was.
By the furniture store?
There's like, just north of Ashley Furniture, that strip center, Mario Trocosi's in there.
Yeah.
And they're, kinda in the back part of that parking lot.
Your Eagleburg?
Okay.
Any other questions on the projects?
I won't ask anything about Duncan Dome.
Thank you. Come on, that's a tradition now.
I think I, I did ask by not asking.
Yeah. So we did want to, as I mentioned, new COVID restrictions are put into effect tomorrow for Kane County and a few other counties as well, but we will be limited to twenty-five people or twenty-five percent of the room, so, you know, obviously, we will need at least four members of the commission present for the quorum, and then we have a little bit more room for the public as well, but I guess we just, David and I would like to get some feedback from the commission on maybe how, you know, we can move forward with this, I know it was brought up, that we might have three members kind of rotate each meeting on virtually until the restrictions are lifted.
I, I think that the challenge we have is, you know, twenty-five percent of the occupancy for this room is fourteen or fifteen people, so when you, when you factor in all of us and Celeste and the court reporter and applicants, we're, we're either at or above capacity, depending on the applicant's team, so I guess we kinda wanted to just survey the commission. Mim, obviously, you're comfortable participating remotely, is there anyone else who would be comfortable doing that or willing to do that?
Yeah, sure, 'cause that's my day-to-day work is.
Yeah.
I mean, I work, that's all it is.
It's better to be here, but you certainly can do it from time to time.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not ideal, obviously.
Yeah.
I think, I think the requirement to have the quorum present, too, may have changed with this order.
Okay.
So we will double-check that, I think there's the need to have one person, maybe the chair.
Maybe the chair.
Present.
Yeah. Well, it'd be better, 'cause then again, I can interact with the public and get a sense of what's going on in the room, which I can't remotely, obviously, 'cause.
And, you know, in the summertime, it was easy enough to, to say to the public, let's wait outside and we can kind of rotate people in and out.
Yeah.
It's gonna be much harder to do in the winter months, so we need to figure out kind of how we're gonna have the public participate, too.
There's no staging area in this building potentially, is there, I mean, another room or two?
I can see the room, so you could, but.
Maybe downstairs and.
Stop thinking, is there another, I'm, I'm not that familiar with this building, it's pretty chopped up below there, right?
This is definitely the largest room, everything else is pretty small, so, I mean, depending on the size of the crowd, we might be, for a meeting over the summer, we, we had people attend the Public Works Training Room, and we set up our camera down there so they could participate virtually from there.
Right.
But we provided the setup.
I remember that, yeah.
So, and then there's, those kind of options we'll have to look through, but I guess, is there anyone that does not have the ability to participate remotely?
Rebecca had a comment, so.
I just had a question, because I just took my OMA
Yes.
coursework today, what they talked about, you know, moving the actual physical location to accommodate larger groups, and I don't know what's expected with something like Emma's Landing or Verizon Tower or whatever, but I just didn't, have we ever done that before, just moved the whole thing?
Yeah, we, we have, but in, in this instance, it's, I mean, it's twenty-five percent of the room or twenty-five people max, so moving to.
Right, so it's not really gonna make, yeah.
If we expect fifty or sixty people moving to a larger location doesn't really solve that issue.
Yeah.
It's the lesser of, right?
Right.
So Emma's gonna be an issue, because there's gonna be a lot of people.
Right, so I mean, we'll, we'll need to figure out kind of how we, how we structure that public participation.
I like the idea you said about having a separate spot with cameras and.
Yeah, it might, might need to be a few locations, depending on the project.
Maybe a couple, like, you could be maybe.
The American Legion isn't far, it's right over here, right? I don't know how you choose, you know, what.
Library's empty, right?
There's a library. Does the library maintain a certificate of occupancy if people could wait there and then come over for their shift?
Kind of rotate people in and out, I mean, those are, some of the logistics we'll have to work out.
Moderate, how are you gonna moderate that, you're gonna, you are, like, it's gonna be out there saying, okay, next twenty-five or whatever?
Yeah, we'll have to have, and then.
Maybe assign an, you know, sort of assign us out.
Hold a number and, like, I'm number sixteen and, yeah, it's, that's, yeah, it's gonna be inter- different for sure.
May- maybe it's, if possible, maybe Emma's and Verizon don't come on the same night.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that, yeah, I think if we're.
Both of those might have some energy around them.
Yeah, if we're anticipating a crowd, we would definitely schedule them individually, yeah.
And the mill race, I have a note here about the mill race, is that gonna be pushed?
We, yeah, but we were targeting to bring that to the city council next week with the initial design concept and financial consideration, but it looks like we'll be pushing that back a few weeks.
Okay.
Just to kind of finalize the presentation and details, based on some of the feedback we've gotten so far, so it wouldn't be before the commission until, in the, probably sometime this winter.
Okay.
Mim, do you have any other concerns on the hearings?
Your mic's off.
Your mic's on, Mim.
I'm sorry, the last one, the only concern I had then was when the hearing adjourned, everything was cut off, so I didn't have any more ability to hear what you were saying, and I know there was some informal information that was provided after the meeting was adjourned, so if there's gonna be any informal meeting, you know, information shared, if there's a way to keep the mics on so that anyone remote can hear that information, that would be helpful. Otherwise, for me, this works pretty well, I mean, it's definitely not as good as being there in person, but it's very workable, and it's what I'm doing, I mean, it's what the university has instructed us to do for all meetings, if at all possible, so this is every day, pretty used to it.
Yeah. And I think most of the people that would be testifying probably have some ability, have been doing it remotely in the past, so they, they might be okay with that, but then, how would you do it with people remote, participating remotely or in person, like, how would we manage that, like, I guess, I mean, again, I'm just saying, it's like, you could have a bunch of people sitting, attending the meeting remotely, and they may wanna participate, like, raise their hand and say, hey, I wanna actually comment, I get into the pool, like, so to speak, so I probably would have, handle everybody present first, since they're here physically, try to get that done first, and then go to the remote.
That's, that's some of the logistics we need to, we need to figure out, so we can communicate that well in, well in advance of the meeting.
Yes, we let the remote people know, they, they might not be able to testify this evening, depending on how long it takes, but you certainly are welcome to attend the.
We certainly welcome, you know, any comments can be submitted prior to the hearing in writing.
Yeah, obviously, we encourage that.
Do it that way, you can, if we set up a remote location, they can, you know, hopefully we can have fifteen to twenty-five people somewhere else that can line up and wait for their opportunity to speak that way.
I think whatever we do, we just need to, I mean, maybe, can you include that in the advertisement in terms of how the hearing is gonna be perceived, uh, processed, so that they at least know heads up, why is this is how it's gonna go, right from the outset?
That's what we've been doing with the agenda, is we've been kind of providing those alternatives to attending in person, so we'll continue to do that and make provisions once we come up with a game plan, but I guess, you know, for tonight, I was interested to find out if anybody said, no, I can't participate remotely, or that doesn't work for me, I don't have a camera on my computer, or whatever.
It's not, I, I would only say that it's not optimal for me.
It's not.
But I, I can do it, I have a computer and a camera, it's just trying to find somewhere in my home that isn't overrun with someone.
I, I know that feeling.
Yes. A four-legged friend or a two-legged friend, something, so, but I could do it.
And you're gonna be there for a while, too, so it'll be, you know, a couple hours of uninterrupted time.
Might be a way for me to go out of town and be away from, which makes it good, but.
I, I have two, two comments to make of things that we've been doing for work that have made large meetings work better, and we've never done anything with a hundred people, I gotta say that, but we have had twenty-five people, you know, we, we've been running community meetings in other towns for months remotely, and two things, one is, we have a staff person who is assigned to be the, the meeting manager in terms of managing who is muted and who is not, and, and allowing people to speak, unmuting them when they, you know, signal that they want to, to participate, and having one person who is focused on that, and not have that be the person who is managing the content of the meeting, you know, like, you would be the equivalent of that, Scott, helps a lot. The other thing is that if you, the chat, and, and we usually use Zoom, and go-to-meeting though seems to work the same way, the chat is the way that people can make comments without having to virtually come to the mic, and as long as they put in their name and address, and then their chat comment, those, all those chat comments can be saved and, and put into the record, so that's a way that actually you could even more quickly than if everybody has to come to the mic, allow people to, to comment.
Yeah, I agree, I think having a moderator of some support that's just dealing with the technical behind-the-scenes stuff, so they don't have to track that.
Right, that helps a lot, you don't wanna have to be watching for who wanted their mic unmuted and who wants to speak next, have somebody who's just scanning and, and watching for that, helps a lot.
Making sure they're moving along and stuff.
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna say, sorry.
Okay.
When COVID first hit in, like, was it March or April, I remember Michael Lambert, he held a Zoom meeting with all the commissioners, and I just transcribed it later type thing, 'cause I didn't, wasn't too sure on the whole Zoom thing, and it, that worked out fine.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's possible.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think for, for like, a night like tonight.
Yeah.
Not a problem, for a night where we've got sixty people wanting to make comments, it becomes really challenging, so, you know, we just, those are the meetings that I think So, you know, we just, those are the meetings that I think we really need to think through and make sure we have an established procedure. But in the meantime, if we have smaller meetings where we think we might be at 16, 17 people, we may have to ask one or two to participate remotely. Just take it case by case.
Yeah. Well, hopefully, it'll get better and we won't have that kind of restriction.
Yes. Remotely, it could be downstairs in your office or something that you can plug in.
Yeah.
That, I could do that. That I could do.
There you go. That might be, you can camp out down there and...
Yeah.
That is a challenge. That is a challenge for just quiet time. So, yeah, I think whatever, again, whatever it's decided, David, that we have that upfront in the, in the notice and stuff in terms of how the procedure is set up, so everybody's notified right after they get going. That's how we're going to run it.
Right.
And as much detail as you can provide, so that, again, everybody feels comfortable that they've got the up and up and how it's going to go and...
Well, we'll continue to work with our IT department and our administration to figure out kind of a game plan, and then we will certainly float that by the commission and get any comments and concerns you may have with it.
Yeah, but it will be challenging. This will be, be interesting to do it. Okay. Any other comments? All right.
Okay. Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Mim.
All right, Mim.
Bye-bye.
Bye, Mim.
Hey, Mim.